Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting. Tonight, before we move into our meeting agenda, we do have citizens' comments. And, hey, Dan, if you'll come forward and if you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Mayor Reed, thank you. Daniel Eppright, 114 Seward Street, Smyrna, Tennessee. I'm here to speak about the Freedom Playground. I never had anything like that when I was little. My dad was Air Force, I was Air Force, I probably lived in 20 towns over time, and I don't think I've ever seen anything quite so excellent. And the primary excellence, in my mind, is that there's all those kids, some who use wheelchairs, some who don't, all playing together, and that's fabulous. The secondary thing is, no one person made it happen. Many people made it happen. It all came together, it was fabulous. And if the town of Smyrna can do that, what else can it do? So I got you a little, I got the town a little present, you know, and it's of nominal value, so we don't have to get Mr. Peach involved. And I think as a former schoolteacher, you would recognize that most of the things that you learned in life that were useful to you, you learned in kindergarten.
Absolutely.
Or from Captain Kangaroo, as he read it out loud on television way back when. Does anybody else remember Captain Kangaroo?
Unfortunately, I do.
One of the books he read was Stone Soup, about how folks came together and made a fabulous feast. And I think that Mayor Reed and all the folks in leadership and Mr. Brian Hercules, the town manager, and other leadership of the full timers, you cracked that nut a long time ago, I think. And then you execute it over and over and over again, and I think it's great. And really, I'm wondering what all we're going to do next. And then there's a book, it's about 2,000 years old, and the only reason it's 2,000 years old is because it's absolutely true. And in Matthew 25, 20 and 21, it says, "The one who had received five talents came forward bringing the additional five. He said, 'Master, you gave me five talents. See, I have made five more.' His master said to him, 'Well done, my good and faithful servants. Since you are faithful in small matters, I will give you great responsibilities. Come, share your master's joy.'" So do I give these to you?
Absolutely.
Ma'am, can you make sure that Mr. Hercules gets one?
I will, for sure. Thank you so much. Dan, thanks for coming and addressing the council. And the one thing I will say about the town of Smyrna is it is always a group effort. When individuals or groups see something that needs to be done, they're willing to step up and see that it happens, whether that's driven through our town government or through individuals in the community. And that's exactly what happened with the Freedom Playground. An individual and then a group saw a need and gathered together to raise the money and make it happen. And I think that afternoon, when we saw children out on that playground, children of all abilities out on that playground, playing, you knew it was the right thing. So I think we are blessed to live in a community like the town of Smyrna, and I would almost guarantee you're going to see more things like Freedom Playground happening within the town. So we appreciate you recognizing the effort that was put in, not only by the town but by individuals as well. So thank you. Okay, I will call our meeting to order. Tonight, our prayer is going to be done by Chaplain Tim York with the Smyrna Police Department, and our pledge is going to be done by Mike Strange, who is our Utilities Director. If you will all stand with us, and please.
Let's pray. Father, we rejoice tonight in the report that we just heard of how our community pulls together. Reminded you have taught us to love God and love one another. And one of the things you instituted was government, and we're grateful for government. We pray for wisdom upon those who lead us. We pray that you would give divine wisdom as they make decisions that just doesn't affect today but many years down the road. Thank you for an atmosphere of a community that can grow, can love, can care for one another. I pray for those who serve this community, those who are our first responders, and those who make effort to put their life in line for others. We pray for our servicemen, we pray for our country, our state, and we ask you to bless this meeting tonight with your power and presence. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Chaplain. Thanks, Mike. Ms. Diane, if you will do roll call, please.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
We will move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the May 11th, 2021, and May 27th, 2021 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeff. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Moving on to item four, Correspondents and Communications. Todd, anything tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we will move on to awards and recognitions. We're going to hold off on breaking bread for a second since she's not here yet, or did I, I didn't see her come in, she come in? Is she in the lobby? Okay. And we will move on to our men's health. Ms. Diane?
Whereas, despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas COVID-19 continues to impact lives across the country, with the Centers for Disease Control reporting that males are more likely to die from this pandemic. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventative health can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screening. And whereas Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive attitudes and preventative health practices. And whereas the citizens of Smyrna are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now, therefore, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Smyrna, I do hereby proclaim June to be Men's Health Month and encourage the citizens of this community to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts throughout the year. Proclaim this eighth day of June, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Diane. Lou, if y'all will come forward, and I'm sorry, I did not get a chance to meet your guest, yes, so I'm going to let you all introduce yourselves. How about that?
Sounds great.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir. I'm Lou Caputo. I serve as the CEO of TriStar Stone Crest Medical Center.
And Mayor, I'm Mike Leventhal, and I'm with the Tennessee Men's Health Network.
Great. Well, we are glad to have you both here and glad to recognize this month, because the men in our lives are very important to us. And I know sometimes men can be a little hard-headed. I know you all might not think so, but for some of the females in the room, I think they know so. So we do encourage men to take their health seriously and to get those preventative checks. So where is Chief Spill? Not here, is he? He's probably off getting a health screening as we speak. I would bet. I would bet. So Kathy, are you doing the honors tonight? Okay.
Okay. I will let you two fight over it. How about that?
I already worked a deal out, so.
Was there anything either one of you wanted to say?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of council. June is Men's Health Month, so this is a time of the year where we want to put the spotlight on men's health, not just men, but boys as well. So I just encourage all the citizens in Smyrna to take this opportunity to go schedule an appointment with your health care provider, starting with Stone Crest Medical Center, one of the best in the region.
Absolutely. We would definitely agree with that. They are a great partner with the town of Smyrna, and we do encourage the males in the town of Smyrna to get out there and take care of themselves. So thanks for coming tonight, gentlemen. Uh-huh. Oh, perfect. Ms. Diane, we are going to do our Breaking Bread proclamation now, please.
Okay. Whereas Breaking Bread celebrated its 20th year in business at 119 Front Street in Smyrna, Tennessee, on May 17th, 2021. And whereas owner Andrea Cork grew the business from preparing meals in her home to feed her family and neighbors into an independent establishment that offers a unique dining experience, seeking to bless and strengthen those who walk through the doors. And whereas cooking turned into her ministry, and she strives to do everything in the spirit of excellence as a reflection of her service to the Lord. And whereas Ms. Cork established volunteer Meals Ministry that serves meals to all five senior living complexes throughout Smyrna on the first Saturday of each month. And whereas in May 2021, Breaking Bread won a Firefly Award for Best Restaurant in May 2021. And now, therefore, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Smyrna, I do hereby ask all Smyrna residents to join me in congratulating Andrea Cork for her accomplishments and dedication to the community by serving others, proclaimed this eighth day of June
So we just want to say congratulations. We know that running a small business is tough, and it's been really tough over the past year, but to know that you've been successful for 20 years is something that a lot of businesses, and small businesses especially, don't get to see. So congratulations from the town of Smyrna, and we appreciate your partnership and all that you do for the town. So, uh-huh. If you all get an opportunity, I would highly recommend that you go check out Breaking Bread on Front Street. You will not be disappointed. Okay, we are going to move to the consent agenda, and if y'all all want to take a nap while I'm reading the consent agenda, I think you will have plenty of time to do that, because I have almost three pages worth to read tonight. So bear with me. The consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing discussion. But if there is an item that a council member would like to take off and discuss individually, we can do that. I do like to read the consent agenda, so those that are in the audience, as well as those that are home, at home, know exactly what we are voting on. So I will get started. Item A, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Galls Incorporated relative to uniforms for the police department. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Solitude Lake Management relative to the annual maintenance for the pond at J.J. McWilliams Old Rock School Park. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Jason Lee McKinney Band relative to the 2021 Barbecue Fest. Item D, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Missy Garnett Music relative to the music and sound for the 2021 Independence Day Celebration. Item E, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with North Alabama Fire Equipment Company Incorporated relative to the fire department turnout gear, coats, pants, suspenders, bunker boots, and fire hoods. Item F, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with CMS relative to the fire department uniforms. Item G, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Garland DBS relative to the roof repairs for Fire Station 5 and 6. Item H, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the completed TDEC grant, general permit for open fracture repair, Class 5 underground injection well permit to TDEC Division of Water Supply Groundwater Management Section. Item I, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension contract with Rawlins Excavation Company ending June 30th, 2022 relative to concrete work. Item J, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to approve Neil Schaefer as the highest-ranked firm to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services for the ITS Phase 3, 4, and 5 project. Item K, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with United Communications to include additional fiber drops to interconnect traffic signals into the integrated traffic management system. Item L, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with United Communications to install additional fiber for the ITS Phase 1 and 2 project. Item M, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Stubblefield Construction LLC relative to the replacement of the Valley Green subdivision sign on Wildwood Drive. Item N, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute Change Order Number 2 with Jones Brothers Contractors LLC relative to the Sam Ridley Parkway riding project. Item O, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a maintenance agreement with TDOT for the frontage road described as Seven Oaks Boulevard from Rocky Fork Road, Enon Springs Road West, following along I-24 westbound to its terminus. Item P, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Rockwell Automation relative to the technical support for the water treatment plant. Item Q, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with J&amp;B Tanker relative to the water treatment plant lagoon sludge removal. Item R, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the following contracts relative to the water treatment plant chemicals, carb use, calcium oxide lime, Univar hydrofluorocilic acid, Calgon, Carbon Corp. powder activated carbon, Nexair carbon dioxide, dicocitric acid. S, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the following chemical contract renewals for the water and wastewater treatment plants for 2021, 2022. The water treatment plant, Univar sodium chloride, dicoc sodium hypochlorite, Hawkins ADC sodium hydroxide, hydrogen peroxide, and calcium thiosulfate, SNF polidine, chloropholic, goldbrunson aluminum chlorohydrate. The wastewater treatment plant, SNF polidine emulsion polymer, NI-CAM liquid aluminum sulfate. Item T, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with IM and E relative to the mechanical work for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Item U, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Thompson Cat relative to the maintenance for the water treatment plant backup generators. Item V, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an engineering proposal with Thomas and Hutton relative to the upgrades to the sewer lift station 1R. Item W, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Brenda Walsh as acquisition agent for utilities easements relating to the North Lowry Street waterline project. Item X, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Boozer and Company for review appraisal services for utilities easements for the North Lowry Street waterline project. Item Y, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Linco Technology relative to upgrades on the Tokay software. Item X, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the following contracts or materials for the utility department, Water and Sewer, United Systems, GNC Supply, Core &amp; Main, Southern Pipe, Fortoline, and Ferguson Waterworks. For the gas department, GNC Supply, United Systems, Richards Manufacturing, Hubel Gas, Carotest, and EYSCO Honeywell, Elster, American, and Mercury. AA, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Dan Weaver Services for the water leak survey services. Item BB, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with Tennessee Water Wastewater Agency Response Network. Item CC, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a support agreement with Experitech relative to the SCADA software. Item DD, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Badger Meter relative to the water meters and parts. Item EE, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Randy Button and Associates for appraisal services for the utilities easements along North Lowry Street. Item FF, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the renewal contract with TDOT relative to the ride-of-ways maintenance for 2021, 2022. And item GG, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Regional Transit Authority, RTA, relative to the transportation to the greater Nashville area. Counsel, any item you'd like to pull off and discuss individually?
Could you read those again, please? I wasn't listening.
I'll talk to you after council meeting. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Ms. Diane, you bring your pajamas. It'll, we'll be here all night signing those. Good. Okay, old business, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight public hearings tonight. Our first public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, Parcel 41.00, to go from R4 with ESO to PRD with ESO requested by Janet Abraham, containing approximately 1.98 acres. The property is located at 2090 Rocky Fork Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, you all have looked at this a couple of different times. This is a rezoning request from R4 to a PRD, both scenarios, part of also, part of the Enon Springs overlay. This is for about 1.98 acres. The request at PRD is for 10 single-family attached units, construction, and five buildings. Access would be from Rocky Fork via a private drive. Units will be brick or stone and concrete siding, with at least 20% of the exterior is brick or stone. We did include the pattern book. We have looked at this several times, and essentially, the pattern book has been updated to address all the comments that came out of the planning commission recommendation. The only other issue that has still is out there is regarding the potential stream that's in the northeastern corner. TDEC has been out to the site and has looked at the site, but they have not provided any information to the town or the developer, developer's engineer with regard specifically to their determination on that stream yet. So at this time, we don't have anything in writing saying that it is or it isn't. And so, and that is, everything else has been addressed with the plans and with the conditions of the planning commission recommended, other than that one item still hanging out there. They have, again, they have tried, but they haven't received anything yet, so.
Kevin, I know last time, some on the council were, felt pretty strongly that they wanted that back prior to moving forward. Am I accurate in that, would you all say? So at this point, because we thought it would be back, what are the options at this point so that they don't have to start the process all over?
Well, I'll defer to Mr. Peach, but I believe, since we've advertised a public hearing, we probably do need to go ahead and hold the public hearing.
Okay.
And then at the time, if you all still feel the same way, I would recommend that you probably defer it at that point.
And can we defer it as much as we need to until we get that back?
Yes, yes. Not like a plat, so you can.
Okay. Okay. Questions or comments on this item before we move to the public hearing? Nope. Okay. Then at this time, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council.
I guess I'll lead the conversation, since I probably spoke on it the last the most. Without the word back from TDEC, I don't see, I don't see how we could vote on it. The way that it's written and the way that it's planned, the decision on whether or not that's a stream or a wet weather ditch or whatever, has a huge factor on the layout of that design. So my recommendation would be that we defer it. I don't know how, can we, do we have to defer for a certain number of days? Can we defer until they hear back from TDEC and let them resubmit or put it back, let Kevin put it back on the agenda once he has that information?
You can defer indefinitely, or you can defer 30 days, or with your motion that defer until town planner receives the information you're requesting.
Okay. That's what I was inclined to, is to motion to defer until the town planner receives information from TDEC.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer until the planning department receives TDEC's recommendation. Do I have a second?
A second, ma'am.
Motion and a second. Will we have to go back through the public hearing process again?
We will.
We do.
Yeah.
Is there something changes that someone might want to speak about that at that time?
Okay.
I'm sitting for public.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is consideration of resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 55, Parcel 29.02.
Yes, this is a plan of services for the item, the next item on your identity annexation request. This is for the property at 55, Tax Map 55, Parcel 29.02. The town would be providing all services to this property upon the effective date of annexation, other than water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district. The planning commission did recommend approval of this plan of service, and I would also recommend approval.
Counsel, question on the plan of services. Seeing none, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Take a motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is our consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PUD zoning of property located on Tax Map 55, Parcel 29.02, requested by Larry Davis, containing approximately 37 acres. The property is located at 3545 Ammival Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an annexation and PUD zoning request for 37 acres on Ammival Road, at 3545 Ammival Road. The, as I said earlier, the town would be providing all services here. Sewer would be via existing pump station until such time the gravity sewer is extended along Stewart's Creek and Rocky Fork Creek, which does border this property. Property is currently developed as a winery and is owned AR, which is Agricultural Residential, in Rutherford County. This proposed PUD would allow for the winery, five commercial buildings, an event venue with a large event lawn area, horse stables and riding trails, and 66 townhouses. Access would be from Ammival Road at two different locations. The townhomes would be a minimum of 1,800 square feet in size, with one and two car garages. The commercial. The commercial uses in the five commercial buildings would be as allowed in C4, with the additional uses of wine sales and having wine tastings. Did include the pattern book. Planning commission did recommend approval unanimously, with several conditions. Again, the uses within the commercial buildings are limited to those allowed in C4, except for the wine sales and tasting. Events are required to end at 10:00 p.m., with the exception that events occurring indoors can extend to 11:00 on Friday and Saturday nights. Townhomes are required to be a four-cell product and owner occupied. We ask them to show the hundred degree floodplain elevation. All townhomes are required to have a double with driveway in addition to the garage, and that a traffic study for the entire development is required to be submitted with the first site plan. I actually did today receive revised pattern books that addressed the first five comments. They don't have, we don't have the traffic study yet, but that would still, would come with the first site plan. Again, the staff, or planning commission did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Seeing no questions for Kevin, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is a consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 21-17, relative to the annexation and PUD zoning of property located on Tax Map 55, Parcel 29.02. Do I have a motion?
Move we approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to our next public hearing, which is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 17.00.
Yes, this is the plan of services for this parcel of land. Again, it is the same situation as before. This is, the town will be providing all services upon annexation, except for water, which again is would be provided by a consolidated utility district. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval, and I would also recommend approval.
Counsel, questions for Kevin on the plan of services? Seeing no questions, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If there's abstaining, please. This one and the next one as well.
Move on to item F, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 17.00, requested by Sean Collins on behalf of James E. Parker, containing approximately 10.24 acres. The property is located at 8965 Rocky Fork Ammival Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this annexation request is on Rocky Fork Ammival Road, about 1,000 feet south of the intersection with Kettering Church Road. Surrounding zoning is a mix, is RAM in Rutherford County, and then the Westover and Helmsley Place PRDs in town. Again, the town will be providing all services except for water, which would be provided by CUD. There is an existing single-family house on this parcel, and it would be zoned R3 upon annexation. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
No changes since last time?
No changes since last reading.
Okay. Counsel, questions for Kevin? Seeing none, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Motion passes and Mark abstained. We'll move on to item G, which is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 21-19, relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 17.00. Do I have a motion?
Move we approve, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item H is also a public hearing. It's a consideration of an ordinance to amend the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 6, Stormwater Management Ordinance, and this is a second reading. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. About eight months ago, TDEC came down to do our five-year audit and found some things that need some adjustment in our, some of the supporting documents to the stormwater ordinance and the public information and education, environmental response plan, and our grading permit procedures. We made those revisions and provide them to you all.
Questions for Tom on this? Nothing's changed.
No, no ma'am.
It's first reading. Okay. We will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item I, which is our public hearing, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for fiscal year 2021-2022, and this is a second reading. Hey, Rex?
Hello, Mayor and Counsel. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same from the prior year at 70.07 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property.
And you did say stay the same as last year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought I heard you say. Okay. Counsel, any questions for Rex? Okay. I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move we approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022, and this is a second reading. Rex?
Yes, ma'am. The staff has put a considerable amount of work in putting together this budget. We brought a draft budget to you for the budget retreat. We spent a good day and a half discussing the budget, some future projects down the We had the first reading on it, where we, at the workshop, we did a presentation and kind of went over the whole budget, and we feel like it's a good budget, and we recommend that you approve it.
We discussed the changes that were made from first reading to second reading, and you have those in front of you. Any questions for those on, to Rex, before we move to the public hearing? Okay. Then, we will go to the public to see if anyone's here to speak for or against this fiscal year's budget. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move to approve the budget.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Under new business, under the planning commission report, we have a consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the approved PRD for property located on Tax Map 32, Parcel 9.04, requested by Adam Green. The property requested to be rezoned, contains approximately 5.77 acres, and is located on Blair Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is a request to amend the existing PRD. Originally approved as Portico Place on Blair Road. It is directly across from where Portico Place intersects Blair Road. It's about 700 feet north of the intersection with Sam Ridley Parkway West. Land use plan for the area would support a mix of office, retail, multifamily development. The surrounding zoning is C2, R6, and R1 in Smyrna, and PDR and I2 in Laverne. The existing approved PRD would allow 16 detached single-family lots, and the proposed amendment would allow for a development with 33 townhouses. Access would be from Blair Road via an extension of Portico Place, which would connect to the adjoining residential development in Laverne. The minimum square footage of the townhomes in this development would be 1,551 square feet. Portico Place would be a public street, but the two internal cul-de-sacs would be private. An approved industrial development in Laverne will be responsible for making improvements to Blair Road and the Blair Road-Sam Ridley Parkway West intersection in front of this property. Did include the pattern book that was attached and submitted would be a part of this rezoning. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request, 740 against, with two conditions. One, that a public sidewalk is required along Blair Road, and to provide ornamental black metal fencing, no more than three feet tall in the front yard of each unit. I did receive a revised pattern book today, addressing those two conditions, and will be certainly getting that to you for your second reading if you pass it here tonight on first reading. Staff did, or I'm sorry, planning commission did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, I know the planning commission recommended ornamental fencing, and I just wanted to clarify and make sure that is not black chain link fencing.
Right.
I didn't think it would be. I see heads shaking, no, but I want to make that clarification just in case.
Yep.
Mark or Tim, anything you want to add to this? I know y'all kind of had a lengthy discussion about it.
Well, we did. I'll let Tim chime in too, but part of the reason we saw this as a fit is just simply because of what surrounds it. You know, there's apartments across from it, there's industry north of that, and with the single-family housing that Laverne will wind up with in behind there, it sort of gives a layer of buffer coming from the commercial side into the residential side. One of the reasons, I think, that we wanted to make sure the sidewalk was placed in and some nice fencing was there is landscaping and stuff to give it a good look, tend to make it look a little more attractive. They should come into that, coming out of the end of the parkway there. Tim, you may have something you want to add?
Well, just to kind of echo that, this is a transitional area. If you look at the land use plan, this is textbook in which we move from commercial to higher density to a slightly lower, lower density, and still a lower density. We're just off of Sam Ridley Parkway here, and we just saw this as a good fit for this property.
Okay.
So, Laverne Portico is single-family homes?
That's correct.
What is due north and then due south that's in Laverne there?
Due north is the industrial development that I mentioned.
And what is that going to be?
It's a big box, you know, like a big box, concrete box warehousing type.
Tilt wall, that sort of thing?
Yes, that type, yes. And we've worked with them quite a bit, because a lot of, most of their road improvements, because they are going to be coming back towards Sam Ridley Parkway with that development, and so they are going to be making some pretty substantial improvements to Blair Road, as well as the intersection there with Sam Ridley. Due south of that, as far as I know, is still undeveloped, and I'm not aware of any development plans specific to that side. Not that I'm aware of, anyway.
The R1 there is, that's the Naren property, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then, on the C2 that is in Smyrna, is there anything there yet?
We have had a site plan approved for a hotel at the corner of Portico and Colonnade. But that's, that's all that's going on in there right now.
The bottom corner is the electrical station, correct?
Correct.
Just another note, if you will, the elevations will face Blair Road, and therefore, the entry of these units coming from the back, really, there's no yard in the back per se. It's, you know, parking and garage, but that's one reason we kind of looked at the sidewalks and the fencing in the front. Kind of felt like anybody that did live there, that had any children, might find the area in the front a little attractive to play in, and want to make sure we protected that from the roadway.
And the backyard looks like it's reasonably sized, it's greenish-badish, correct?
Correct. Get some detention and stuff in there, too.
Concerns about parking at all?
You know, that's, and I'll answer that, because that's what we talked about. You know, you've got parking for three per unit, actually, four per unit.
Exteriors, three.
Yeah, there's a garage and, right, three for exterior.
And the HOA, part of the HOA requirements will be that the, the garages themselves cannot be used as storage. As a matter of fact, you have to park, or if you're going to park, it's going to be a vehicle, it can't be used as a storage type area.
I would think if they do, it's going to be hard to get traffic up and down there.
Any concerns about safety in regards to fire department?
None.
There was a little bit of concern from the fire department on the end units, but I think they've addressed that, because the, the initial alleyway going to serve those end units was a little narrower, and they've widened that to where it's as wide as a streak now, 22 feet wide. So, they've, I believe they've addressed that as well.
Okay.
Where it's listed here, stormwater in the backyard, is that retention or detention, or what is that?
There is detention in that area, but there is also some area outside that detention area that's going to be more, be usable, open space for the residents. And there's a couple areas, kind of on either side, where there'll be some stormwater detention areas, but then there'll be areas outside of that as well. And there is, there's, the stream that's shown there does not show up as a, any floodplain or anything, but it is an area that is a contributing stream, as we talked about on a previous request, and so, they are showing the stream buffer and all as they're required to do.
Other questions?
Was there ever discussion for that being commercial?
Not the, we've never had any requests for anything. It was zoned R1, along with, this was a part of the Naren property originally. It was all R1. Certainly, it probably could fit as commercial as well, from a overall standpoint, but I think it's, it's a little bit more difficult probably to develop as commercial, just because you're getting a little bit further away from Sam Ridley Parkway and don't have as much visibility, but certainly, but there's never been any discussion about it, no, sir.
Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item two, under the planning commission report, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezonings of property located on Tax Map 33, Parcel 75.01 and 75.02, to go from R3 to PRD. This is requested by Jared Gray. The property is requested to be rezoned, containing approximately 10.1 acres, and are located at 2381 and 2483 Rocky Fork Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
This is a request for a PRD for, to allow 100 townhouses. Access would be from Rocky Fork Road via an extension of Country Villas Drive through the development. Minimum square footage of the homes would be 1,380 square feet. All the roads within the development would be public. Did attach the pattern book, as we do on all these. The planning commission did review this, did recommend denial unanimously. Staff would also recommend denial.
Mark or Tim, anything you want to add?
Once again, you know, we try to be consistent with what's going in, what type of areas. We had one in the month prior that was trying to work its way into Terry Town. It was an older established neighborhood, and we just felt like this was much like that one. The density was pretty thick, but just the townhomes themselves weren't a good fit for the R3 that surrounded it, and there was really no consistency there. So, we just felt like on this particular project, it just wasn't a good fit for the area it was trying to be placed in.
Well, and I've had some people ask me, are y'all just opposed to all townhomes? And I don't think that's the case at all. I think you can see that by some of the stuff that we have approved, it's just... It's just that we want to make sure it's the right fit, no matter what it is that's going in, whether it's homes or anything, we just want to make sure it fits with the surrounding zoning, so.
And too, we're getting, you know, we're getting more developments as we grow that are a mixed type of product, where you have 55 and older townhomes, single-family residential, and that's, that's kind of what you want to see in a larger development. But to us, this just didn't, the surrounding, everything about it just didn't fit. So we felt like what you just said, we are not against them, we're not necessarily for them. They are affordable housing for a lot of people these days, which is something we're running out of quite quickly. But this particular one, we just felt like we needed to not approve it.
But not only affordable housing, not everybody wants to keep up a yard. They don't, you know, it's not the, I want the acre lot with the picket fence and all of those things, so.
They have their place.
That's exactly right.
And this just wasn't that place, and so.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we deny.
A second.
Motion and a second to deny. Any discussion? All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Item three is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 50, parcel 7.07, to go from C2 to PUD. It's requested by Rob Mulchen. The property requested to be rezoned, contains approximately 4.48 acres, and is located on Seven Oaks Boulevard, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this property is on Seven Oaks Boulevard. It's about 1,300 feet west of the intersection with Almival Road. Land use plan would support an office-retail multifamily mix in this area. Surrounding zoning is C2 as well as PRD, which is the villages of Seven Oaks across the street. This proposed PUD is for development with 26,000 square feet of office warehouse space in two buildings, and then an 89,752 square feet self-storage space in one building. Access would be from Seven Oaks Boulevard in one location, as well as a connection to the adjoining office warehouse development that'll be at the rear of the site. Proposed use in the two office warehouse buildings would be as allowed in C2, which is what is currently zoned. Did again attach the pattern book and master plan. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and I would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Mark or Tim, anything?
This is another one we looked at because that, that area over there is starting to show signs of life. For a long time, it was quiet, and there's a lot of residential over there. This is enclosed, the backside of this is enclosed storage, it's not exposed storage. So the design review met probably above our standards for what they're going to do there, plus that larger building backs up to the interstate, and so there's not much of attractiveness for, for business there otherwise. But the two commercial buildings in the front are exactly what we were looking for in a way to kind of give a buffer to that back building. But all three buildings look really nice. I think you can see it in the drawings there. They did a good job on design review, so we thought it was a good fit.
Questions for council, for our planning commission members, or for Kevin?
Two?
Yes. There is an area that's kind of at the top of the building that looks like a floor, and that's, that's not a, that's really just a decorative, almost just on top of the building, just to make, for a little bit of architectural interest, I guess you might say. It's not an actual usable space at all.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Say.
Motion and a second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the text of the design review manual to amend section 3.4 Architectural Character. This is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is an amendment to the design review manual. This is something that, there's been a lot of discussion at planning commission regarding certain materials, and so we wanted to bring this forward to them, and they did review this. This would just amend section 3.4 Architectural Character as to address allowed exterior building materials. The proposed amendment would remove tile and plaster as allowed materials, move stucco and ephes architectural precast only being allowed as secondary materials, and requiring that at least 75% of any building facade that is visible from a public street is required to be finished with primary exterior materials, and at least 50% of the entire building facade is required to be finished with the primary exterior materials. I did change the format a little bit just to make it a little more clear and understandable. The planning commission, again, they did review this, did recommend approval, and I would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Do we have this a lot on houses as well, or is it mostly just?
It's just commercial and multifamily.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Well, I was asking Tim before the meeting about why tile would be taken off. I mean, tile's not a surface which, that requires a lot of maintenance, that doesn't look like it has durability, so on and so forth, and I recognize the fact you don't see it very often, but it could still, like, be used as accent. You go to, well, I mean, I think there's a few, few buildings on Church Street in Nashville that may have some tile accents in it, and you go to Europe and you see a lot of tile there. I mean, was there any, what was the thought process, I guess, is the question?
Well, and as I had it originally drafted, we did kind of leave them alone, and then they, in the discussion at the meeting is when the planning commission, some of the planning commission members brought up, I think it was really more specific to plaster than it was tile, but we ended up taking, the discussion was to take them both out just because they're never really used, but, so.
Hey, she, that, that was kind of the discussion. I don't think anybody had a problem with tile necessarily, but we were looking for an example of where we had it, and it's, it couldn't be brought up, so we were thinking, if it's not used, why is it in there, kind of question. But the plaster side of it is really kind of, I think, what we were after more so. So I can tell you, I don't think the planning commission had to worry one way or the other about tile, but the plaster side concerned us some.
I'd like to see tile put back in, honestly.
Out of everything that's.
As an accent.
Out of everything that's on here, you're not going to say one word about ephes?
I was waiting for you to, because I've got 10 or 12 comebacks on the ephes there.
During the meeting or after the meeting?
I'll wait it after.
Okay. I don't, I mean, it doesn't matter to me in regards, one way or the other, on the tile.
Well, the thing about it is, if somebody comes in with a building and they want to use tile, I mean, surely no one would object to that, but if it is specifically excluded, they could not.
Kevin, do you have an issue if we leave tile as accent?
I don't have a problem with that at all, no.
It doesn't have to go back to planning, does it? Jeffrey, Al?
No. I say we put it right back in there.
I'm going to make a motion to approve these amendments with the exclusion of tile.
Not the plaster.
Is that an official motion?
With the tile being as accent.
As a secondary exterior material.
Okay, as a second, how do you want it worded, Kevin?
Well, we call them secondary materials, the stucco, ephes, we just add tile to that list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, she, when he said ephes, did you twitch at all?
In a good way, not a bad.
No, I, I finally figured out that y'all have caught up with the twitching, and the planning commission decided to twitch too.
Hey, she's made peace with ephes. I'll second his eventual motion.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment to the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article II, Section 2.020, definitions in Article III, Section 3.180, fences, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Mayor and council, this was something that staff initiated. There's been a lot of discussion over the years about fences and different things. But this is one that, really, the COGS department kind of kept bringing it to my attention and asked me to try to draft something up. And so this is really just an attempt to clarify the ordinance for ease of understanding and enforcement, as well as to better define it and as to the original intent when the amendment was originally. This was something that was actually added to the zoning ordinance back in 2002. So currently, fences are allowed on side and rear property lines, but are not allowed to encroach on the front yard setback, public utility and drainage easements for public rideaways. Decorative fences are allowed to encroach on the front setback, but can't enclose any areas. And so basically, the amendments would change that definition of what a decorative fence is, and also allow them to encroach on the front yard setback along the side property line, not across the front yard or enclose the front yard. We also added exemptions, other than the public roadway encroachment, for any fences that are utilized on land that is in agricultural use. That's kind of how we've always enforced it, but I wanted to go ahead and put that in the ordinance so it's clear. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Do we have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item B, our packaged liquor board report. Our first item is consideration of an application for a certificate of compliance for a packaged liquor store from Mr. Patel at Smyrna's Divine Wine and Spirits located at 292 Sam Ridley Parkway East. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor. Council, I will first state that the packaged liquor board did give a positive recommendation to the applicants, Mr. Patel, at this location. I do want to advise you, however, received communication from the current store owner that advised me that there has been some, I guess, renegotiations or lack of negotiations that do not believe that it's going through at this time as far as the sale of the store. Obviously, all of these packaged liquor approvals are only for that location, so it doesn't mean that you can just go anywhere in the town. It's only specific to that location. So we have 60 days to act once it's been filed, which was on May 17th, which would give us to July, if you wanted to defer for a month to see if the parties perhaps reach a different agreement. Or you can go ahead and vote on it tonight, but they, they would still not be able to have a, have a permit or license until it's surrendered from the current store, because number one, we're limited to five, number two, they can only move into this building at this location. But I just think it would be cleaner probably if, if we kind of knew if there was for sure deal or not going through, instead of having one just basically sitting out there for a 12-month period.
Can you have two operating on the same plates, though?
No, because the way it was approved was through this store and that amount of, it was approved as is, so they couldn't remove one square foot because of the way that it was approved. It has to be at that location. You couldn't have two stores in one plate.
Jeff, it also has a co-applicant, but I mean, it doesn't indicate whether the co-applicant was, whether background information was checked on them or not.
It says it wasn't, because they didn't get anything on that second.
It says others.
It's, yeah, it says others is not provided. Is that, I mean, is that an issue?
No, no, it was not. And it was due to the number of percentages of owners, and so Mr. Patel was the one that was provided, and they still have to provide their, all their information to the ABC. We're just the, the second step, and they still would have to go and receive their license from the Alcohol Beverage Commission. And when I spoke with them, they were okay with the application as is.
So are you more comfortable with us deferring this?
I would recommend deferral.
Would you recommend 30 days?
Right, till the next council meeting.
Okay. Questions for Jeff on this? And this is only good for 60, is how long this?
Great, we have, well, we have 60 days to vote on it from when they've submitted it, which was May 17th, so it would give us to July 17th. So we would need to act on it next month, one way or another.
Are they aware of that in their negotiations?
They will be after denying.
Okay. Questions for Jeff?
So just to be clear, there's potentially a hiccup or dispute or something with the contract of purchase?
Correct.
And the original owner saying has contacted you or someone at the town of Smyrna and disclosed that, that there's an issue with the sale?
Correct.
And with that, it may or may, it may not make as much sense to approve that until we have total clarity. Otherwise, this thing could go on for a while and could prevent something, I guess, another sale of the same property occurring, or would hold the license that otherwise would be utilized.
Right, I don't know that there's much of a danger, I just, because they can only be at this location.
Right.
So, but at the same time, if we have the opportunity for 30 days, my preference, obviously, the council can do whatever it wishes, my preference is not to have an approved one out there that's, that's not utilized when we know that, that the store is not selling. If we can get some clarity, we may not have any clarity by that time next month, but when I spoke with the owner, that's just what they had asked, is just, you know, see if there's 30 more days, and I would hate for the applicant to have to come back through the process totally again, and so I think it would be more prudent to.
So more in hopes there's a resolution.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I don't think it's totally gone, I think it's just maybe in a, having some complications at the moment.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer based on council's recommendation.
We have a motion to defer, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of deferring, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is deferred. Item C, under new business, is consideration of a resolution authorizing the town to file an application for a TDEC grant relative to a park property at Cedarstone Park. Mike, how are you?
I'm great.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you well know, the town's applied for a grant for tennis courts and pickleball courts at Cedarstone Park. Part of the grant process is to have a resolution passed by the town council and send in with the grant application. As you well know, this is a 50-50 grant. Our, our part of the match is park impact fees for $500,000, and the state money would be $500,000 if approved. We have three years from the contract date to get the, the project complete if, if we're able to get the grant.
Questions for Mike on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item D is consideration and approval of classification compensation plan for the town positions for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Hey, Jeff?
Mayor and Council, in conjunction with the adoption of the budget for next fiscal year, we are asking for you to approve the classification and compensation plan for town positions for the fiscal year 2021, 22.
Any questions for Jeff on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
To approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item M is consideration and approval of an amendment to the town's retirement savings plan document to permit a Roth option under the 547B, as well as changing the in-service distribution age to 59.5. Jeff?
Sure. As we mentioned at the workshop, the town would like to amend the current retirement savings plan to provide a Roth option under the 457B plan, as well as change that distribution age from 65 to 59.5. That will give our employees more options in retirement, gives them an opportunity to choose either a Roth, which is post-tax, where they pay taxes right now, versus the pre-tax version that we have currently. It also allows them to get to their funds a little bit earlier when they're close to retirement age.
Questions for Jeff on this? Jeff, I appreciate y'all looking into more options for our employees. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last item is appointment of one member and one council member to the Board of Directors of the Lineball Public Library to serve three-year terms. And Steve Sullivan was our town council appointment, and I will say, has done an excellent job. I know you've put a lot of hours into it. And Lynn Alexander was on the board as well. We had originally gotten an application from Lynn, but got an email, and I think we all got that, that she was pulling that application. So we currently do not have an application for a member to the Board of Directors, so I would like to put that on the agenda for next month. But I'm in hopes that Steve would be willing to serve as the appointment from the council again. Great. So would someone be willing to put that in the form of a motion?
Make a motion if Steve would be willing to do that again. He does such a great job. He does an amazing job.
I would agree with that.
Flattery will get you everywhere. See what it just got you?
Yeah. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Steve. And if there's someone out there that is interested in serving on the Board of Directors for Lineball Public Library, which meets in Murkensboro once a month, second Monday, if you would submit your application, then we will take a look at that next month. Okay, we will move on to, anything under other tonight? Nope. Okay, then we will move on to announcements. Anything, Ms. Diane? Todd?
Have a few, Mayor. We received an email from a Jody Warwick who experienced a gas leak after hours. Derek Francis with the gas department as well, the fire department responded. And I think it's impressive, the line that she wrote in her emails, even though it was after hours, he responded immediately and with an extremely gracious attitude, which that's a can-do attitude for the town employees. She was very complimentary to us, and at the end, kudos to our Smyrna team, which that just further emphasizes the hard work that these people are doing in those situations.
I would also say I have gotten multiple letters or emails like that about Derek. He does a great job, as well as the rest of our town employees. So it's always nice to hear.
My neighbor next door is an elderly lady lives by herself, and there was a gas leak from her central heating and air unit, which was having problems. And it was after hours on a Thursday night, and about 8:30, 9 o'clock. And I was very impressed with the quickness and the effectiveness. They ended up checking gas levels inside her home, around her home, inside my home, around other neighbors' homes. They went above and beyond, not just checking this one meter.
She was impressed that he came back and double-checked. So that was impressive that he double-checked everybody else.
Okay.
I have, late this afternoon, we received information that Mark Hardy, who works in our Coats Department, lost his granddaughter. We want to extend our thoughts and prayers for Mark and his family in this untimely passing of his granddaughter.
I had no idea. He was on the parks board with us, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Gosh.
And the town council and the employees received a very touching card from the Atkins family to express their deep appreciation for their kind and thoughtful expressions and sympathy. And again, Mark, we want to extend our condolences for you and your family, and keep you in our thoughts and our prayers.
Anything else?
Oh, yes. The town hosted our annual Memorial Day ceremony at the Captain Kous Memorial. Thank you to Lieutenant, Lieutenant General Keith Huber for offering remarks, VFW post number 8422, Carpe Artista, and the Smyrna Fire Department Honor Guard for sharing their time to make the ceremony exceptional.
It was a nice ceremony. It was probably the, one of the best we've ever had.
Very well attended and very poignant with Lieutenant General Huber.
I agree.
We're looking forward to the return of many of our special events this summer. One that we're excited about is the annual Boat Day, which will be held Saturday, June 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Jefferson Springs Rick Park.
And Brian will be doing the first canoe that goes out. The first splash.
Since he's not here, would that fall on Todd?
No, I'm just the stunt double.
Oh, it's a launch.
You did a great job, by the way, tonight.
Yes. Well, I guess they could go in, all three could get, he and Rex and Todd could all get in the canoe together. I think y'all do a great job.
Splash will be my nickname.
That's right.
And then finally, our Independence Day celebration will be held Friday, July 2nd. Activities begin at, begin in Lee Victor Ecological Park at 5:00 p.m., fireworks for a display, we used to call it Dark 30. So at 9:30, we will, usually dark plus 30, we'll have the fireworks. And Chief Coberton does a wonderful job getting those fireworks.
Agreed. And I think everyone's looking forward to it.
Very much so.
Yeah, seems like it hasn't happened in two years.
Agreed. Anything else?
On a personal note, just want to wish my wife a happy anniversary on Thursday, so...
Very good. Any big plans?
No.
That's not the right answer.
Yes, we're doing a lot of cool stuff, Mayor.
Maybe there's a surprise, Mayor.
Any nice gifts?
Uh, no. After 32 years...
Not the right answer again.
32 years. It's a surprise. Can't disclose the surprise.
It may just be 32, if that's what your answer is.
That was his limit.
It was all the limit, yeah. That's all I have.
That's it. Thanks. Jeff? Raquel?
Condolences to the Hardy family, and Mark, our condolences to you also, continuing to keep you in our prayers. Also wanted to say congratulations to Andrea Cork and Breaking Bread for celebrating 20 years in business. And also wanted to mention that this past weekend, there were quite a few events, and one of those was the Depot District Arts and Story Fest. And so on Friday night, there was an Authors Night and Poetry Slam that was held at Carpe Cafe. And then on Saturday, we had the Art Crawl. And there were three winners, and Mayor, I think at some point, they will come to council meeting and receive certificates for the citizens, chosen winners for, we had this year, an adult category, a youth category, and we also had a veterans category this year. And I'd also like to thank Melissa Scott and Ron Alley for overseeing all of those events this weekend. And I know you're going to talk about the great Tennessee Air Show, but we were able to attend that, and I think that went really well. And a lot of people came out and supported that, and I was glad to be able to take my son. He really did enjoy it. And lastly, Memorial Day ceremony, I believe it also went beautifully, and was glad to be able to be in attendance. I agree on what you said, Mayor. It was one of the best we've had.
I agree. Thank you, ma'am. HG?
Also passing along my condolences to Mark. I can empathize with him. It's really tough to lose our parents. And also Mark Hardy, who's a very capable park board member, he's been terrific to serve with on the park board. So sorry for that. Over the last few weeks, watching America open back up has really been fulfilling, you know, with the Memorial Day service, this last weekend with all the things that went on, the Art Crawl, but the Air Show was absolutely terrific. And, you know, that really instills a lot of pride in America with us all. And this weekend, we have more to talk about, the Simply Smyrna celebration. And there's so much going on, I actually made little notes on this one so that I could get and cover it all. But it'll start at 6:00 on Saturday night, of course, at the Depot. They're going to, this is kind of a sister event to the Depot Days, which is held in the fall and held by Sima. But this one is more emphasis on music. And there'll be five venues scattered across the Depot area. The emcee for it all is Devin O'Day, who some may be familiar with. She's with Main Street Media. And some of the names which people may notice, it'd be Jason McKinney on the main stage, Elacostic Soul at Cafe, at the Cafe stage. And inside the Depot, JT Cooper, who's known around town as a very patriotic veteran, and he will have Warrior Rounds, which is songwriters, veteran songwriters, who will be performing their own music. There will be over 70 vendors. Two things of note, if you care to have a beer, the Beer Garden will be there, sponsored by the Casual Pint and Sima. There are two different wine tastings, so you could take your wife down to the wine tastings for your anniversary. Those are also hosted by Divine Wine. And one other large thing of note with that is that we will also be celebrating Carpe Artista's 10-year anniversary. So a big event, first one, Mary Esther?
Yes.
Carpe Artista 10-year anniversary.
Everybody's anniversary in this year, aren't they?
How about that? They sure are.
I bet they get gifts.
Another thing that I would like to relay, yesterday was my lovely daughter's birthday. So I want to wish her a happy birthday. And then next Monday will be my son's birthday. So happy birthday to my two wonderful children. I'm very proud of them.
Do you think they got gifts?
Did they get gifts?
Yeah.
We generally hold off and do all that on, oh, Father's Day, we'll do that.
But they'll get gifts for that, I mean, that would be, they would get gifts for that occasion, probably?
Oh, yeah, they'll get gifts. Do you have something in mind that they need?
No, but I was just thinking about anniversaries. Most people get gifts for anniversaries.
That's true. And that's all I have.
That's after 32 years.
After 32 years, yeah. Tim? Do you give your wife gifts for your anniversaries?
Yes, I do. It's the 22nd, it's marked, gift is bought, and I'm prepared.
There you go. Maybe you need to have a little chat with Todd.
I will.
Okay.
It's always hard to follow HG. It was just riveting, the way you described things, and I do appreciate that. I'm excited about Simply Smyrna, truly.
I've been practicing, by the way.
Oh, thanks. It's a great showcase for Smyrna. I mean, Dan talked about Smyrna and how we care and what we do for others here. It's just a great showcase and its community reminds everybody that it's Tennessee's town, Smyrna. So again, condolences, Mark, Dan, Tony, your entire family, and also condolences to the Hardy family. I know you'll touch more on the great Tennessee Air Show, but once again, HG said it well. It was, you just felt so patriotic, and you truly took pride in America and how things were showcased. And it was just a great air show weekend. So hats off to the great Tennessee Air Show and the Airport Authority for pulling that off. That's it.
Jerry?
Some of the same things that everyone else has already talked about, but obviously, Mark, again, condolences, as I know we talked some, but continue to remember you and the Hardy family as well. The Memorial Day celebration was fantastic. Really enjoyed being a part of that and being able to go to the air show as well. The one thing that I don't think we're going to be getting together before this, so I just want to, it's kind of early, but I just want to wish the fathers out there a Happy Father's Day. And some of us are not fortunate to have hours around, so just be thankful. If you do, tell them you love him, and just hope you, have you, hope you have a great day on that day. So I guess that's all I got.
Great. Steve?
Couple of things, obviously. Mark, sorry for the loss of your father. Father's Day coming up, I was going to mention Father's Day. You know, I'm fortunate enough that my dad is relatively young for my age. He was only 15 when I was born, so I get to, I've gotten to spend a lot of years with my dad and enjoyed doing things with him that some folks don't allow, and I don't take that for granted. So I'm sorry for your loss, Mark. And happy Father's Day in advance, especially to my father, but to every father out there. Mark Hardy, sorry for the loss of your granddaughter. I can't imagine the pain, and I am sorry for that loss. Memorial Day, sorry that I was not here. I spent the week with my son in California for his 96. He gets a four-day weekend for Memorial Day, so we went for the week and spent a great week with him. It's the first time we've seen him since Christmas, so it was a good time. And speaking of him, he has his birthday coming up, June 17th. We won't meet before then, so his 20, what year is this, 22nd birthday will be June 17th. And then my segue there is Mark and I have another birthday that we have to mention.
Yes, I was on my list.
Would not possibly want to miss. My wife Pam and Mark's wife Connie happen to share the same birthday. They both celebrated their birthday on June 4th. And I'm not sure about Connie, but I know that Pam told me she was 29.
Told you Connie was 29?
Told me that Pam was. I have no idea about Connie.
So I think Connie might have lied to Pam.
Okay, it's possible. I don't know. But I was very, it was very, I was instructed very pointedly that she's 29.
You know why? Because you knew if I said something, you'd be in hot water.
That's why I'm glad I go before you. Because now, now I didn't forget.
And you won't let me?
That's right. That's all.
So happy birthday to my wife Connie this past week. And we'll just leave the whole age thing alone. She knows how she is. I was 15 when I married her, actually, so I'm just kidding. You know, that's a joke. Okay, so, you know, the memorial, the memorial service that we had over at the Kous Memorial site was touching. I thought Lieutenant General Huber's speech was spot-on. And he talked about service and sacrifice. And, you know, there's a great gift given to us by those that have done so. And so hats off to them, salute them. I was really touched by his speech. You know, I'd just lost my father, and my father was an Air Force servant, my mother was too. So, you know, I thought about Dad's funeral, too, being military honors in the time that he gave as a representative of the United States Air Force. I want to say thank you to everybody that called, or texted, or sent me a message, or came by the funeral home to visit, or just whatever it was that you guys reached out and told me about your condolences. I really do appreciate that. Dad would have been super proud of the air show this weekend, too, watching those young people go out onto the tarmac and take the oath of service. And, you know, that tells me the country's still in really good hands, because you've got young people that want to go do that and serve their country the way they do. The air show brought a lot of pride to me personally, because my parents and my background with the Air Force. But, you know, when I think about those pilots, and, you know, the Blue Angels that were here a few years ago, lost a pilot. That's a dangerous job. I was quite impressed with all of them as we met them. Major Coran, Michelle Coran, is the solo, lead solo flight for the Blue, I'm sorry, for the Thunderbirds. And she's like 34. She's the fifth pilot ever to be a female to fly with the Thunderbirds. So I know that you had an opportunity to get all the girls together and have their pictures made, and that may, may or may not be up there. But just awesome to see young people like that step up and be part of the military and serve our country the way they do. So to me, why... So to me, watching those young people be sworn in, you've got a son serving currently, and it just empowers me to feel a lot of pride about our country and where it's going, so that's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Mark. So you've heard a lot talked about the great Tennessee airshow that took place, it was the 50th anniversary this weekend. Hard to believe it's been going on for 50 years, but it's such a huge part of the fabric of our community and I think the patriotism in which that we feel. And so congratulations to John Black and the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority for hosting such an exceptional event. What a lot of people may not realize is, they kind of take care of the stuff that are, that's inside the gates, but there's lots of stuff outside of the gates that has to be taken care of. You know, traffic just doesn't magically take care of itself, so our staff is, the week leading up to the airshow and really long before that in regards to safety and in case there was something that happened, working behind the scenes, we can't thank our staff enough. I also want to thank all the residents and the guests that were here. I can't tell you, and one thing that I've catched myself doing in the town, whether it's I go to a restaurant or Walmart or an event, I'll check out the license tags. Can't tell you the number of license tags from California and Michigan and states all over the country that were here for the airshow. So thank you to all of those individuals for your participation as well. Want to thank the Smyrna Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation for your role in making the weekend such a huge success. It takes quite a few people to put the airshow on and make it such a successful event. We were lucky enough, the pictures that you see on the screen, we were lucky enough to get to go out to greet the Thunderbirds coming in on Friday. And Chief Bill got some spectacular pictures as well as Kathy Farrell, and you're right, Michelle does an amazing job, and if you got to see her up close or got to see her plane up close, you'll notice that her number five is upside down on her uniform as well as her plane, because she spends most of her time upside down in the air. So it was amazing to get to talk with her for a little while. Also condolences to Mark Hardy. Mark, you and I have talked quite a bit about your dad and how sorry we are about that. Jeff, I know a lot of people sometimes wonder, they'll hear my phone and hear the talking of the meeting going on, but I do that because I like to make sure I keep up with the comments that are on Facebook, some I disregard, some I actually like to ask questions. So one person was asking about solicitors in the town, and I've actually seen quite a bit of this on Facebook, where they've got solicitors coming to their house and what are their requirements? And I don't know, I don't know if Chief Arnold or Ms. Diane or Jeff, one of you all might be able to take this to talk a little bit about the rules and requirements, and if somebody doesn't have the permit, what do they need to do? So who wants to take this one?
I, I can start off. Diane probably even knows more than I do about it, but they do need, if they're going to be going from house to house, they do need to have a solicitor's permit. Within that permit, some of the things that are going to be required are the make, model, and license plate of the vehicles that are going to be used in that, the duration of time that they're going to be, they're also going to have to pay for that permit as well. And then, at any time, if someone feels like someone's being too pushy, that's usually where the issue comes, right? They can always contact the police if they, they feel unsafe in that matter. Keep in mind that we cannot tell folks not to go to these houses, but you can put up a, you know, solicitor's sign. If you don't want folks there, at least to let them know, you know, some folks may not pay attention to that, but, but still, it's always a good idea if you, if you don't want them to be there, to put up a sign for them.
So, once they come and actually get the permit from us, what is it that they would have that I would know if they come to my door, they've been to the town? Is it a piece of paper? Is it something that we're on the neck?
It's a piece of paper and it says solicitor's permit, it's been signed by Chief Arnold and it's been signed by me.
Okay. And usually, if I'm, if I'm going to be soliciting in the town of Smyrna or want to and I want to come get a permit, how long does that process usually take?
Um, well, I, as soon as I get the application, I send it to the police department and they do a records check on that individual. So it may take a few days for that to come back.
And I guess what I wanted the citizens to know is, if they go through proper channels, we do check out the solicitors and the cars, we know what car they're going to be driving, those sort of things, so.
And there have been times the chief did not sign off on one for various reasons, and when that happens, done plenty for them.
And if somebody comes to someone's house and they ask for the permit and they don't have it, is the best thing to do to call the police department and let them know?
Yes.
Okay. So I hope that that answered Ms. Demumbryam's question, and she said she does have a no soliciting sign up, but I don't know that there's much that we can do about that, so.
It's interesting that you brought up, we, my neighborhood, which is actually right behind the police department, we had recently had a rash of solicitors, and as our neighborhood, we decided to put up a neighborhood sign at our entrance that says no soliciting, and we've also done, on our internal Facebook page, the same thing you're doing, kind of communication to the citizens of what, what they're allowed to do, what they're not allowed to do. You know, the sign doesn't mean they can't do it, it just is letting them know that you would prefer they don't. So it's kind of important that you understand that, that even though you have no soliciting up there, it's not like a no trespassing sign, it's a little different. And that was something that was a little hard for us to kind of understand in our neighborhood, because we had the sign and there were still licensed solicitors coming to our doors, right? So it lets them know that they're not really wanted, but it doesn't actually mean they can't do it.
Right. Well, I know when they've come to my door, I politely ask them, have they gotten their permit? And I let them know that they have to have a permit and how they go about doing that, so.
Do you tell them you're the mayor?
I do not tell them I'm the mayor, I say I'm the vice mayor, is what I say.
I think if you told them you were the mayor and then asked for their permit, they're probably going to go away if they don't have a permit.
So, and, and many of those that are out doing that are hardworking folks that want to do the right thing, that may just not know that we require permits, so.
I usually let jacks go to the front window.
Oh, that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
It's funny, Mayor, because I tell everybody I'm the mayor when they come to my door.
You do? Oh. Well, I do have to tell you that I did hear one funny story from, that I saw posted on Facebook, that it was somebody who was volunteering for the airshow this weekend, and said that there was a nice couple that parked in an area that was very much marked off that you could not park in that area, and so the volunteer went up to them and said, you know, you're going to have to move, and they said, I'm the mayor's brother, and she politely said, well, I went to school with the mayor and I know she doesn't have a brother. And he said, oh, but I'm her half-brother. And she said, well, it's really funny, because I actually was a student of her mother and I know that she nor her father have a son. And he said, oh, then I guess it's probably time for me to move on. And she said, yes, probably so. So anyone out there that's using the story that you're the mayor's brother, it's not going to fly, so. Anything else to come before the board?
Yes, Mary Esther.
Yes, sir.
Be kind and shop local.
I was going to see if you remembered. I was worried about you.
Thank you.
It was slipping, yep, slipping. Okay, anything else? Nothing else, we are adjourned.